A call or meeting to order. First item is rolling. Diane.
Mayor Scug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ny.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here too.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you Diane. Next item, presentation Selectron phone system. Mark, you're gonna do that?
I'm gonna get it started.
Great.
See if this mic reaches my height.[66.56][66.56](Laughter). Well, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mark Lusson. I am the Customer Accounts Manager here with the town. What I want to do today is share some information with you on a possible procurement in the near future for our operation with utility billing. Now what I am wanting to introduce is an interactive voice response system, or also known as an IVR. And what this is, is a technology, or basically like a computer, that allows our customers to call us and instead of being directed or possibly delayed depending on the volume of calls we're receiving, it allows them to interact basically directly with the computer through their touchtone keypad. And what this can do is it would streamline the operation. It'll allow the customer to save time explaining their situation or doing different inquiries on their account and maybe eventually making a payment to their account. What this does is it can eliminate that, excuse me, it can eliminate that maybe middle person depending on the call volume. Now what that does is that it doesn't necessarily allow them to talk to a robot. It allows us to program our own voices to interact with that touchtone keypad. So you wouldn't have that robotic impersonal message that you're being heard. Through their touchtone keypad they would be allowed to do several different things. They would allow to check their account balance, make a payment, check their history on their account, see where they're standing, maybe what they paid six months ago. So it allows a lot of flexibility to our customers. Now, other ways that it can benefit our customers, let me just say that currently we are sending out over 19,000 utility bills on a monthly basis. That number has been steadily increasing over the last few years. Out of those 19,000, a little more than 30 percent of them are calling us directly to make payments over the phone. So what that equates to is roughly 6,000 calls per month go to either myself or my employees. Now, on a very busy day, which can be most of the time in our call center, it doesn't allow each customer to get directly in contact with us. Sometimes it'll get deflected to our voicemail, which will then delay us getting back to them because by the time we check that, 30 minutes, an hour to two hours could have passed by by the time we're able to get in contact with them and give them information about their inquiry. Now what this will do is currently we're on a Monday through Friday 8 to 5 schedule. So right now our customers are on our schedule to pay their bills. Now what this will allow is a 24/7, 365 day a year access. So what they'll do is revert from our schedule to the customer's schedule so it frees up the customer to do their business with our utility billing information and their account at their leisure, not on ours basically. When they're able to get that information to them on demand basically, that's going to increase their satisfaction with our service and the services that we provide to them. Most of the time these calls are answered by the system within the first ring. So how many times have you called somewhere and you're getting a constant ring, constant ring? That gets you flustered and frustrated, especially if you're in a rush. By having to answer on the first call, it just increases that time, decreases the time you're on the phone, but increases your satisfaction with the service. Also on outbound calls, it's able to eliminate many staff hours that we use to do outbound calls to our customers to give them a friendly reminder that they might have a bill due or that one is past due. The system is able to do that automatically. Now, over the last several months, myself and my director have been basically kind of shopping around, talking, interviewing, attending different web conferences and phone conferences with three different companies. Through much analysis and comparison, we have decided that what was best for our customers and for the town is a company called Selectron Technologies. They are a company that their forte is the IVR system. And what sets them apart from everyone else is the integration and the seamlessness it would be to transition them into our system. Our current database provider, Sunguard, who we use for our utility billing, has deemed them a preferred solution provider, which means that when we call for a recommendation or reference from them, this is the company that they hands down prefer to work with because of the capabilities and then also the delivery of the service, not only to the town, but also to the customers on top of that. Selectron does have a PCI Level 1 compliance, which means that the security through this system is like Fort Knox. You're probably not gonna get into it. It also, an important feature that I particularly liked is the touch for Spanish speaking. We currently don't have a bilingual person in our operation. This also allows our Spanish speakers to utilize this system. One thing that I liked the best was the option to still be able to talk with a customer service rep live, not face to face, but one-on-one over the phone. I think giving that option to allow our customers to still have that really helps provide that customer service because sometimes you might want to just use the phone real quick to pay your bill, sometimes you might want to ask a reason why for something and you want to speak to that person. That's, was very quickly all I have to say about that, but I want to go a little bit more in depth with it and I want to introduce Louis Gouge. He is a representative from Selectron.
Good, welcome.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come here this evening.
If you would give your name for the record.
My name is Louis Gouge. And I'm one of the count reps, sales reps for Selectron Technologies. Have to get this little handy-dandy thing here going properly. And so, the first thing I'd like to just chat a little bit about are the benefits of these types of systems. So your customers will be the ones that will benefit the most from these systems. 24 by 7 access to the system. We're going to also do some things around outbound calling. These are typically called courtesy calls. And we're just trying to get customers' attention, just let them know for any number of reasons. They forgot to send in a bill, they were on vacation, they were out of town for a few days, any of those just kind of very common things that happen. We find that a phone call, you know, that just makes them aware of the situation, they'll either get a voicemail or they can pick it up live and then press one and it'll actually transfer them right back into the IVR and then they can make a payment using a credit card or e-check if you so desire. One of the additional benefits to these types of systems is in addition to the 24 by 7 access that your citizens will have, is we're gonna be adding what I like to call virtual agents. So you usually have a number of people on the phone, but there are times of the month, during the day, the first part of the week, when it's much, much busier. And so we're gonna be adding approximately five additional options to answer the phone. And the system is very full-featured, can answer any number of routine phone calls. The check that I mailed in last week, did you get it and post it to my account? They'll be able to call in and get those kind of things. You know, you get that call the night before about your account, you're on the, you know, potentially, you know, might have an interruption of service, so they'll be able to call in. We see these calls come in all hours of the night. You know, sometimes people get up very early in the morning to go to work. They can make a payment before they came into work rather than having to try and get on a break and, you know, make that payment during that time. And then, last but not least, there's full integration into your CIS utility billing software. So when we take a payment, we're actually gonna post that as a pending payment into the cash receipts journal. And, so some of the functionality that's available, and I'll try to not talk too loud, I think I need to adjust it a little more based upon Mark's, so much taller than I am. There's a customizable message on the very front of it, so it can be changed literally on the fly for any number of things. Snow day, I understand that we even maybe got a little snow flurries earlier today, possibility that there were some. And then we can get any information around our account, our billing date, our current balance, any past due balances, and then of course we can make a payment at any time. And then just a little bit of the flow here, so people are gonna call into the system. They're gonna enter their account number or a phone number. We can also do a phone number if you want to use that like the primary phone number. And then they'll be able to access their information. We can lock it down a little bit. Typically, the most common thing is to use like a PIN or a street number, like the first three or four digits of your street address. And then they'll have access to all of that information there. They can make their payment and then if they, they don't want to do that, we make it very, very easy for them. All they have to do is press zero and they'll get transferred to a real person. And so what we see in these systems is they usually drive between about 35 to 45 percent of the calls that come into your call center off the staff. And some of the benefits to that is, the story I always like to use is I had, my wife's grandmother was quite elderly at the last few years of her life and while she was very sharp, still was not always comfortable with some of the technology that was out there and so she always wanted to chat with someone. And inevitably she knew most of the staff there at the city and would want a little extra time. And so, these type of systems allow your citizens who just want to get in and conduct business to go about that very quickly. And then it'll also free up staff who need to take that extra time and spend it with citizens and make sure that they're comfortable with everything that's going on. And then just a couple of quick case studies. You guys can read these very well, but I just want to point out here, City of Tucson, it's a very large water utility here in the state of Arizona. And their system resolves a large number of calls. It takes about close to 10 percent of their cash receipts on a monthly basis. And then, one just a little farther away, over in Tennessee, and I just wanted to point out one thing there, you can read all the rest of them, but they saw significant reduction in their monthly shut-offs by using the outbound functionality to just remind citizens. Can be quite difficult sometimes for internal staff to get to all those people who are delinquent or have gotten behind for any number of reasons. And we're gonna automate that process. It can go on all day. We can make multiple phone calls rather than maybe a single phone call by a staff member. We can call at more convenient times for your citizens. All of those things can be automated by the system. And then just a couple of testimonials here, for your reference. Most of these customers have had these systems for at least five years, some of them in excess of 10. And then, just a little fancy slide there. These systems are designed to provide access to citizens, to your CIS utility billing system. They start with the phone, both inbound and outbound, and they are the backbone of improving efficiency with about 150 different customers that we work with today. And then I just have a little slide up there. These are all the payment providers that we currently work with. And you guys use, I believe PayPal at this particular time, so it's one of the ones that we work with, enables you to maintain PCI compliance, which I'm sure you've all heard a little bit about, maintaining security around credit card information is a very important issue nowadays. And then, last but not least, we have, as I mentioned, about 150 of these systems and utilities all across the US. And we've also have provided a similar type system for your building department for, I believe, close to 10 years now. It schedules all the inspections. So it's a similar technology that your citizens are very comfortable using. Thank you.
Any questions? Mary?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. You might have mentioned it and I missed it, but what is the charge for this? Did I miss that?
The price that we have negotiated with Selectron would be the upfront fee of $75,000 over the course of three years. So cut that in a third, $25,000 a year for three years.
Okay. And the other question I have is, you mentioned that when the customers can call in to make their payment, maybe after you guys, after the department's gone home, when they make their payment, is that payment gonna be credited the same day as if they were calling in and talking to you or is it gonna go on the next day's work? Like, if we're leaving at 5 o'clock, they get off of work, we're calling in at 6, are they gonna get credit on their bill that day?
Do you address that one?
So there's a little, there's a little process there. It is posted as a pending payment in real time.
Okay.
So, and I'll give you the example that I always use. So, let's say, you know, in my household we're behind, my wife has asked me to make the payment. She knows me fairly well and know that I don't always follow through sometimes as well as I should have, but today was a good day for her, I followed through, I made the payment. She calls in five minutes later and she's gonna hear that there's a pending payment. Now, we may not have updated our, all of our general ledger accounts, all those other accounts, because what we'll do is we're gonna post this as a pending payment, so it's gonna show up in my account that I've made my payment.
Okay.
So I won't show up on the shut-off list if you run it in the morning.
Okay.
But we will, there's another step though. Typically, we would do a reconciliation of that cash receipts journal at the end of the day to make sure that everything matches up, just an accounting function. And then we're gonna post that to the system and it'll update everything in a batch at that particular time.
Okay, and so let's just say that they're calling in and it's the ninth day and they get a late fee at midnight. It's a pending payment, are they gonna get a late fee when they've done the payment and it's pending? Am I asking that question clear? Like if they're going to get a late fee for $10 for not making their payment on time, but they're right on that wire, we've already closed down for the day. It's a pending payment, but will they still receive a late fee because it didn't actually click in on that day?
Yeah, you can answer that.
Did I answer, did I ask that correctly maybe?
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
The way our system reads is once that pending payment is credited to the account, it stops any penalty fees or any additional charges from happening.
Okay.
So that would work in unison with that, to where it would prevent that from happening.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Marty?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, with every new system and every new billing, there's always a adjustment period. Based on your experience, how long does it take for the customers to get used to this new system? And the other question I have is, what's the call capacity? For example, you know, the utility bills go out on, let's say, a Tuesday and, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, you know, let's say everybody receives it on Tuesday. Wednesday and Thursday are gonna be high call volumes. Is the system large enough to handle all calls that come in? Or does it reach a point where they're gonna be put, you know, they're gonna get a message saying, please call back later, our lines are, everybody's busy and we're full?
Yes. So typically we try to size these systems based upon what we see as an anticipated call volume. So we've sized the system. We do believe that it will meet your current needs. It can be expanded if we were to discover down the road that we needed some additional capacity in that area. But my experience, I've worked with about 75 or so of these different systems all across the US in the eight years that I've been at Selectron and you should be just fine with the capacity that we've sized it at at this time. As far as citizens being comfortable with this technology, we see, you know, there's a very short, you know, learning curve on them. For example, at the City of Tucson, Tucson Water, they did no advertising. We're gonna provide you guys with some marketing brochures and stuff so you can get the word out on that. It's part of the services that we offer as these solutions. But at the City of Tucson, they did no advertising. They just turned the system on one day and it took, I believe it was over $10,000 in cash receipts in the first half a day that they turned it on.
Other questions? Mary?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have another question, sorry. The, you said it was 75,000 for three years, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, divided by, for three years, yeah, okay. So that's the contract, that would be our contract, correct?
No, we would actually, we'd actually be purchasing the server and everything to provide this. So once we make that payment of, once we fulfill that contract, paid in full, we continue to have this until, not the end of time, but
Yeah, but
We would have maintenance yearly on top of it, but
Okay.
Significantly cheaper and way more sense-making for the town to acquire than, like I said before, the other two that we did speak with also.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Laura?
Is this cost based on our population count and expected usage? Because over the next three years, our population's going to increase, probably significantly. So I'm just wondering how that's factored in, at what point will this system cost us more?
Yeah, so the only way that the system would cost you more is if we have increased call volume. And again, that's where the ability to expand the system comes into play. It's not untypical that we would see growth in a community and would need to expand the system. As for the pricing, it is the same that we provide to every other jurisdiction and the variable is typically the capacity of the number of phone calls it can take simultaneously.
Okay, so it's very likely our capacity will increase in this three-year timeframe you're talking about. So will that 75,000 hold true for that three years or when we're impacted by increased population, it will change within the three-year timeframe?
With that 75, depending on the growth and the call volume and how much the capacity of this server's able to handle, we would have to just basically purchase additional ports or basically entities to where these incoming calls would go to.
So we don't really, truly, we only know what that's gonna cost us right now with current population. We don't know what it's going to cost with increased population. Could you give us some kind of idea what the increase would be per units of increased population?
It's $2,000 per port.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's like adding an additional agent each time. So, you know, if we double the size of our community, it's not a one-to-one. So typically there, there's some fairly fancy algorithms that go into these. For example, Tucson Water has, I think, 225,000 accounts. It's not a one-to-one compared to you. These systems, they really cycle people through pretty quick. They get their business done and it is routine phone calls. And, so you'd have to see a significant growth in population to where you would need to add any, there would be any significant impact financially upon the town of Prescott Valley.
Mary?
Yeah, just a comment. This is just another, one of our suggested moves going forward, where we're employing technology as opposed to hiring a number of employees. And that certainly helps us when we have the downturns in the economy. And we can name any number of programs that we have employed in the town of Prescott Valley, like HTE for example, to make us very technically advanced, if you will. And it's good to hear that Tucson Water's been using that because that's a mammoth system. And if we're able to go ahead and be more customer-friendly and end up reducing our human workload, we're saving money for the town. And so when we do go ahead and expand from our present population and let's say we have an incremental change of 3,000 citizens, this will last us for a while, it's built into the system. But then when we have to take the next jump, it's not another $75,000. The $75,000 is for the purchase of the system. Our annual software maintenance, if you want to look at it that way, is a de minimis cost, quite frankly, compared to new people. And so it, it, it's really a good step forward. And for so many folk that are more digitally inclined, it's so much better for customer service.
Marty?
Yeah, just to tag on to what Laura Lee started saying, how many initial ports are we gonna start with?
So, there will be six, but one of those will be dedicated to outbound calling, so it will be five incoming?
Okay, just to have an idea of how many ports it's gonna take for the population currently, thank you.
Laura?
And that's a very conservative, you might be able to get by with a little bit less, but we wanted to size the system properly in the beginning.
Laura, question?
Pretty much directed to Larry, thank you. I think this is a very logical progression for us. It's just for budgeting purposes, I want to know how much more it's going to cost because we budget ahead. We don't budget from behind. So that, which is much why I asked the question, is anything.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mark or Louis? Use the microphone if you would. It's gotta go on the TV.
Thank you guys very much for your time and consideration for us.
Louis, anything else?
Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate you letting me show up tonight.
Okay, thank you. You gonna be bringing this back to us then, Mark? You gonna be bringing it back to us?
Yes, we're bringing it back on May 7th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to next presentation, library materials, budgets, historical, budget report 2014 and 15. So where did I see you brought some good assistance?
Oh, yes, I brought the person with the brains. I want to thank you all for, Mayor and Council
and Council, for letting us give you a little information. I'll acknowledge Kathy Derry is here from the trustees. I apologize. We tried to get as much information to you on the sheets that we presented about how we purchase our materials, how we, when it comes to weeding the materials, and breaking down some of the numbers. So if you have your sheet in front of you, the one that we sent before you, I just want to acknowledge the current amount of money that we have. And this is really kind of a fluid. The money's fluid. If I find any money anywhere, I try to direct it towards materials. The problem we've had with the, oh, she gave, oh, she gave us a dime. So maybe that's how we'll start this. Do you have a basket?
Yeah. Pass around the basket.
Yeah. One of the things that I have to constantly monitor with the operating budget for the library since we moved over here is the, we're spending more money on toner because we have way more printers than we did over at the civic center. So like currently, I think we're like $4,000 in the hole. So I, any money I have to weigh. Am I going to be okay at the end of the day? Because that guy back there, he doesn't like it if things aren't quite right. And so then I'll think, oh, I want to buy materials. But then I got a timeline, too, because at the end of the fiscal year, we've got to make sure that the items are here in place. So that's the business about the amount. It's about 70,000. We, you know, Claire Maiselitz has been very generous, and I'm going to be telling her that the last donation, which she made of $5,000 for large print books in memory of her family, is about all spent. Whether she decided to do some more or not, I don't know, but she has frequently. I want to go down to the bottom left about the collection procedures. Pretty much, overall, my career has been patron-driven for the most part. The professionals kind of sometimes are ahead of the game in knowing what our patrons like. But when we get requests, we look at that and we look at several factors. For example, I watch a lot of C-SPAN Book TV on the weekends, and I'll bring them and let them, you know, to say this one was on. And then they looked in the system to see how many other libraries have it. And then, of course, they also monitor the amount of holds. I looked at one the other day, and there were 40 holds. Well, you know, unfortunately, if we don't have multiple copies, the wait time is going to really probably be annoying to the patrons. So we look at that, and then on top of that, there's different formats, you know. It was nice that it could be just a hard copy. I'm sure Larry would want electronic copy. But so that takes more of our money just on one particular title. Then if you look on the right, where we talk about the number of items borrowed, we, at one point, we were proud, we were more, we were loaning more to all the other libraries in Yalupai County than we were borrowing. As you see, at one point, that has taken a change. And part of that, we think, is based on perhaps not being able to have a lot of new items, a lot of new books because of the, we only have so many, so much money. So, and I'm going to let Casey talk about the electronic media portion of it, and if there's any questions. I'll take the dime.
Oh, thank you. We recently started buying Kindles and have preloaded bestsellers on the Kindles. There are 10 titles. Each Kindle has 10 titles of bestsellers. John Grisham, James Patterson, Jody Picolt. We had a biography on George Bush. So they're really popular right now. And it says that we have four, but we just purchased more, so we have a total of 10. And we can't keep them on the shelves. They're flying off the shelves. They're very, very popular. So we're trying to fill that niche of people who want, you know, an electronic device, but they don't want to necessarily go out and purchase it. So we have it here for them to borrow. So it's really wonderful.
Do you want to talk about Overdrive, how that works a little bit?
Yes. Overdrive is our free ebook and audiobook download that we've purchased through the YLN. And it allows patrons to borrow those electronic books and download them to their devices for free. And I don't have the circ stats on those, but that's extremely popular. And as, it's like, we can only purchase one copy of that particular title, just say a James Patterson book, somebody wants to download that, but we have holds on it. So you can put holds on the electronic books. But again, if we only have one copy, they're going to be waiting a long time.
Then I also wanted to talk a little bit about the second sheet. What we wanted to do is, historically, it has somewhat like this. Historically, we wanted to let you know where we were at, the money that the town had set aside for materials. Because currently, if you notice, we're using the money from the county that has been designated for materials. That's like 53,000. So if you look at what we have gotten up to by '07, '08, was 78,000 from the town. I will acknowledge the Board of Trustees. Nancy, my administrative assistant, tried to find when that was, but the board came to you in, had to have been, we moved in there in '99, and it was sometime after that. Because if you'll notice, there was a yearly increase of about 8,000 that I seem to have remembered, that they came to the council requesting a plan of a certain amount every year to get that materials budget up and to be a little more adequate. Gets a little muddy when we get further down, because of course, we had that McBride money that was used for the opening day collection, and that kind of trickled down for a couple of years. But you see what happened in, when we started the decline, we were given the mandate to cut a certain percentage of our operating budget. And to meet that percentage, one of the things I cut, of course, was all travel. We just, we didn't have a lot in there, but we did have enough for people to go down to the state conference, never anything on a national level. Then I had to just hit that materials. That's where you notice that it kind of went away, and then it's been starting to slowly build up. We tried to designate some of the increases that Larry has, you know, given for these New Years to materials, but I, as I mentioned, I kind of look at that very carefully. What we did one year when we got close, and I was getting worried that, I went, we went ahead and bought the electronic Overdrive materials, and now it's another company called Recorded Books because it can be instant into the system. So we don't have that issue of having to have the actual piece of material in by that June 30 deadline. So that's kind of a synopsis, if it makes sense, I hope. And any questions?
Questions, anyone? Oh, Laura?
I don't have any questions, but I want to applaud you. You know, there is a percentage of, of population that thinks our libraries are going to go away.
Oh, okay.
And you are showing them that you're dealing with the e-readers, and I want to comment and compliment you for everything you're doing with our youth. I, I'm just so impressed with that. And Larry and I had a conversation about this recently, and we're very proud of you, just so that you know that.
Well, thank you. And if I look at the monthly report, the attendance of these programs, especially the teen ones that they've had, has been tremendous. So I'll let the staff know because they really have, they're out there all the time thinking of what else can we provide, something different for everybody. And by the way, I have, I put a book on hold for you because I'm your personal librarian.
Marty?
No charge.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I have a Kindle, and I've used the library system to borrow books through it. And for anybody that hasn't used it yet, it's really simple and clear. And, yeah, you put on hold and you get an email saying you could download it, and you just click on, and it really goes through the system pretty quick. So...
I did it today.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, yeah, it's a very, it's a very easy system to use, and it really makes things better for somebody who has a Kindle or an e-reader or one of those electronic devices. So thank you for that.
Well, and they do have, some of the staff, some are, have experience in one of the other kinds of electronic devices. And so they're usually, we get frequently, people will call, and they're available to help them with learning how to do it.
The brochures that they have at the front desk are very simple to follow. So, yeah, it's a, it's a great system, what you've done here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else?
That's it.
Casey, anything else?
Oh, get the basket.
We need $75,000.
Now you sound like one of these two.
Thank you. That's it. That's all I'm going to say.
Talk to Mr. Colby. Okay, move on to the next one. Discussion regarding awarding a contract for professional audit services.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers.
Yeah.
The item before you is the result of our process of selecting a new auditing firm. For our financial policy, we are required to go out every three to five years to solicit bids. Now, there's nothing in our policy that indicates that. We have to go out and select someone new. We can use the same firm over and over. But we do this to make sure that we get a very competitive quotes on our, on the audit services. So as you can see, we sent out eight proposals, and we only received three back. Not sure, it must be, you know, last time we did this, five years ago, we sent out 10 proposals, and we got 10 back. So I don't know if it's just because of the change in the, you know, everyone's busier or whatever the reason, but we only got three proposals. And at the bottom of the RFCA, you can see the results of those three proposals. For the town audit, Heinfeld-Meach, who we've been using for the last five years, they were the lowest for the town audit. For the CFD's audit, Henry and Horn was the lowest. Now, our recommendation at this point would be to continue using Heinfeld and Meach, even though they were not technically the lowest bidder of the three. The firm of REDW was the lowest. But because of our working relationship with them, because of their expertise in really municipal governments in Arizona, basically towns and cities, they've, they've done a lot of audits within the state of Arizona. Their background with CFDs, understanding CFDs in Arizona, that they're a little bit unique. So our recommendation at this point would be to proceed with the, to offer Heinfeld-Meach a three-year with two additional optional years at the end, if, basically, if we decide if everything is going well, that the audit's going well. And one of the reasons that we picked, or why we like them a lot, is that they've had the same audit staff over the last five years. Their managers have been the same. They're very highly qualified, very professional individuals. So it's that longevity that they've had at the upper level that really has provided us with a very excellent level of expertise. So that's what our proposal would be at this time. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Mary?
It's not a question. It's just a comment. I will say that I have appreciated them in regards to that CFD. Those are very complicated, you know, I mean, especially for a person like me. So I appreciate this company's expertise. I just want you to know.
Thank you.
And your recommendations.
And one of the other benefits that we get from them is that because of their level of expertise and also reviewing CAFERS, as you know, we prepare the town's financial report, but because it goes through a very thorough review from their staff, you always find little things that they're basically, they have us change. Not the numbers don't change, but just some of the language that they see is, makes it clear, or what, where the change in some of the technology, or change in some of the footnote disclosures going, they really, they recommend, and they stay at the forefront of that. And that's a lot of the reasons why, you know, we get the certificate year in and year out. So for them, for them helping us.
Mike?
I just had a question about, are, which companies that submitted proposals are local or any-
Really, there were none that were actually local. Heinfeld-Meach is out of either Flagstaff or out of Phoenix. Henry Horn is out of Phoenix. I think the other one, they have, they have a presence. They do the Yalupai County audit, but they're primarily out of New Mexico.
Well, that's what I recall. I think the existing firm was out of Flag, right? The staff come down from Flagstaff primarily?
They come back, she, well, they're, last year, they came from Flag. The year before, they came up from Phoenix. So, and the manager is out of Phoenix. So she's been with us for quite a few years, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just one. I was just looking at the audit of the CFDs and wondering why Heinfeld-Meach is so much higher than the rest.
Yeah. We talked to them a little bit about that, and again, part of that goes back to, some of it is the complexity of some of our CFDs. I mean, we do have a couple that are a little bit unique. And so, and so, and I think part of it is, is the amount of time they actually spend. They've gotten to a point where the, my staff has really done a great job preparing the annual CAFER for the town. So they actually have spent less time on the town's financial report and audit, and more time reviewing and going through the CFDs to make sure that there's no other, you know, legal issues and things like that that they have to disclose. So, you know, I think that's something we can still talk to them about. But our focus was really, you know, what are they providing to the town? Most of the CFDs have to pay their own cost for these, for doing these financial reports. They do provide audited financial report. They provide an opinion on each of the financial reports. So, but, and all of the CFDs, except for one, does not pay for their own audit. So that cost is not, is not paid by the town.
Any other questions? Anything else, Bill?
It'll be on the agenda for next week for your approval, for your signature, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question that's unrelated to this topic. But, Bill, do you know offhand how many of our water customers pay by the Internet?
Um, no, not offhand, no. It's part of our problem with, when we bought our accounting and our utility system, it was actually in 2002, the first year I started. We migrated to this system. The online payment engine that refers to Click2Gov, basically, we loaded it that year. So it's been the same system since 2002. You know, it's, it's not a smooth system. It's a very, and there hasn't been very many upgrades to the system. So a lot of people have a tendency not to use that system because it's, it's not as user-friendly. This automated system, by far, I think, is a lot more user-friendly. That's why a lot more people call in because they have a hard time. See, when you log into their Click2Gov system, you have to have your 10-digit account number. So you have to have your bill in front of you, and then you have to have a password that was generated and sent to you. It's not a system where you can just type in your name, and all of a sudden, all your account information comes up. It hasn't gone there yet. So that's why we do get way, way too many phone calls, where people give us, a lot of times, they'll give us the information over the phone. And we try to tell them, no, we cannot take that information. That's, you know, there's some compliance, there's, you know, there's security issues with that. We don't want to take your bank information. And a lot of customers are very, are unhappy. They don't like that when we don't take their information over the phone. So to, you know, eliminate those type of potential issues, you know, this was the next best thing. Yes, down the road, I would love to upgrade Click2Gov, but again, there's a cost associated with that also. So I can probably get you the information. Mark will be coming back, though, in May. That's another one study to actually show you. We have the, basically, the proposal will be part of that RFCA. We'll talk a little bit more, and we can have some more numbers on that RFCA to show you.
No, that's, that's okay. The explanation was fine. I understand.
Yeah. The system right now, the way it's set up, it is set up to handle a lot more customers than what we have. Right now, we have 19,000 customers. That system is really set up to go about to 25, 28,000 customers. Again, we'll find out truly- Again, we'll find out truly, you know, what, if we start having problems. If anybody, if there's any customer now that calls and says, I couldn't get through, that's a problem. And we'll take care of that problem very quickly. And that's one thing, we really want the system to be very user-friendly and, and to give it that after hours, you know, customer service that we, we really can't provide at this point right now.
Other question about the auditing?
Yeah, I, so you're saying that the, the one we have right now, the Click2Go, we would be looking at upgrading that?
In some, I went some days, it's not this budget year, probably in future budget years. What I wanted, what I want to see and what I basically have told Mark is that I want to see how many people are going to go and start using the Selectron option. So if everyone starts migrating to the Selectron option, we may not need to upgrade our Click2Gov version, the online webpage. So, but that is something we're still going to look at. We just didn't want to incur both those costs in the same year. And, you know, I thought it was just too much of a cost and I weighed the option between the two and I felt that the IVR, especially with the outgoing outbound calls where you can call and remind customers that, you know, your, your, your bill is past due, you know, here's your payment options if you want to pay. We felt that was a very, very good feature. Because Mark does get a lot of delinquent notices that are mailed on a weekly basis. So we felt that that was, that outweighed the upgrade to the Click2Go version at this point.
Okay, we've deviated from our
I know, I'm sorry.
Agenda item, but, but I'm bringing it back to number three. Larry, did you have a comment?
Well, just a comment on the question that Councilmember Anderson raised. And I believe it's a safe statement to say that less than 10% of our 19,000 customers are using Click2Gov. And we tried a campaign, it was about four years ago, and had it in the mailers, in the utility bills saying, you know, save yourself a stamp, go ahead and do all of your utility payments online. We did get some movement, but not significant.
Any final questions about auditing, counting? Anything else, Bill?
Nope, we're good, thank you.
If there is nothing else, then I would say the meeting is adjourned. Everybody hates that, I know.